I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, would you call the roll?
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Christian Koppel.
Here.
Let's three Evans.
Here.
Alex Grados.
Here.
Paul Ritter.
Here.
Alan Zepf.
Present.
As a reminder, our board governs by policy aligned with state law. These policies are not just guidelines, they're legal ethical obligations that ensure transparency, accountability, and consistent leadership. When policies no longer meet the district's needs, it's our responsibility to amend them within the bounds of the law to better serve our community. The board acts as a whole only in duly convened public meetings with a quorum present. Outside of this structure, no individual member has authority. Adherence to policy protects the district from risk and ensures that all decisions are fair, lawful, and aligned with our strategic goals. Our mission is to empower all learners to succeed in their world. Our vision is to provide an ideal learning experience where students and staff are engaged and want to come back the next day. Our board policies and actions should reflect that mission and vision. So, a couple of things I'd like to talk about during the student and staff recognition piece, and we're gonna make a quick deviation. During tonight's student and staff recognition, I'd like to pause to acknowledge the loss of one of our own, Mary Beth Fuze. Beth served Sycamore School District four two seven for thirteen years as a dedicated special education teacher, most recently at Southeast Elementary School. She began her career at Sycamore Middle School and South Prairie Elementary School. She faced her two-year battle with cancer with remarkable grace and strength, supported throughout by her Fuzefighter teams. As an educator, Beth had an extraordinary ability to connect with her students, creating a safe, joyful classroom where every child felt seen, supported, and capable. Her impact on students, families, and colleagues is profound and lasting. At this time, I'd ask that you join me for a brief moment of silence in honor of Beth and the lasting legacy she leaves with our district and community. Thank you. The next item, on a different note, I'd like to take this time to recognize the work of Heather Tomlinson. Heather, if you wouldn't mind standing up, I'd like to recognize you. Heather's been on the Board of Education since this past April, and while her time on the board has been short due to a very reasonable change in her family situation, Beth, yes, I'm sorry, Heather has been absolutely instrumental in serving this board. She notably proposed a resolution, which Sycamore School District has done for the first time in a very long time, at least in the history I've been on this board before. That resolution happened to be the only resolution that was submitted by the eight hundred and fifty-three school districts solicited to submit resolutions and received the recommendation of that resolution committee's adoption for active lobbying with our General Assembly at the state legislature. It received a overwhelming amount of support this past weekend as it successfully passed, and Sycamore was mentioned, read aloud again alongside no other districts as a supporting resolution for change regarding, really at large, the concept of unfunded mandates and in general specific to buses. This is a framed copy of the resolution that you proposed and successfully had adopted, and now it lies in the hands of the IASB to lobby to get this made into legislation.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Separate, but equally important, has been the time that you've served this board, the countless number of hours that you volunteered to work with us. Make no mistake, I know that this is a volunteer capacity role. You run in an elected position, you operate under the scrutiny of the public, you learn things and information as fast as you possibly can while coupling it with your responsibilities as a parent and while under employment. You're pushed into the ethical quandaries of what is right and what is wrong and what best serves the most possible people, and in return, you get this beautiful plaque, your name placard, and a resolution for your hard work.
Thank you so much.
Your community is grateful for your effort.
Thank you.
And filled with Reese's, sustaining you in those long nights now at Shem. This board is in no way endorsed by Reese's.
Michael, can I jump in real quick? Just a lot of what you echo, or what you said about Heather, I would echo about the whole board. I know you guys don't want recognition tonight, but the gifts in front of you are just board appreciation, so I won't say a ton, but you guys also put in so much time, so many hours, so much work, and it's volunteer. Most people think you get paid, you don't, I know that, but the gifts in front of you are just an appreciation of what you do, so thank you all. That's all I'll say, Michael, I promise.
Well, I appreciate that. We will have to report these as taxable earnings though.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, thank you, Heather.
It's been such a pleasure, and thank you everyone for all of your faith in me.
We know you'll watch all the live streaming meetings.
I'm gonna be keeping my eyes on you. I'm interested to see who you guys choose as superintendent, but I have the utmost faith in you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, guys. Bye, bye.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, I'll be soliciting a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented items four point oh one through four point oh nine, which are composed of minutes of regular meeting October twenty eighth, minutes of executive session October twenty eighth, bills payable, financial reports, personnel report, fiscal year twenty-five annual statement of affairs, fiscal year twenty-six school maintenance grant, revisions to policy four sixty, and the IASB conference reimbursement. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented items four point oh one through four point oh nine?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Kelly, would you call the roll?
Regnery?
Hi.
Zantu?
Yes.
Koppel?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Grados?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Motion carrier.
The next item on the agenda is the NIA consent agenda. The recommended action is to approve the NIA consent agenda as presented items five point oh one through five point oh four, NIA treasures report, NIA bills payable, NIA personnel report, NIA contract slash vendor agreement report. Is there a motion to approve the NIA consent agenda as presented?
Some.
Items five point oh one. Through five point oh four, sorry. Okay. It's exciting.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Seconded.
Seconded, any discussion?
Just one piece of brief discussion, if that's okay. Nick, I do not mean to put you on the spot. I emailed you very recently about some NIA information. I didn't know if you had a chance to, again, not on the spot, I know you haven't, I just emailed you about it, but.
Sure.
I emailed Nick about NIA, the co-op, just curious if he felt like we were maximizing our place on NIA's board in order to help their sort of staffing align best with our co-op needs, but if you haven't had a chance to look at it, I totally understand. Don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I think it'd probably be best to maybe even meet in person. I have served on that board, there's been one board meeting since I've been in this capacity, so it's fairly new, but I think it'd be appropriate to probably bring Mrs. Thurman in on that conversation as well. But absolutely, I think it's worth further discussion.
Perhaps a future agenda item. Great, any other discussion? All right, seeing no other discussion, Kelly, would you call the roll?
Zantu?
Yes.
Koppel?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Grados?
Yes.
Regnery?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Motion carrier.
All right. At this time, I'll be hosting a public hearing for the adoption of a levy in conformance to the requirements of the Truth and Taxation Act. The purpose of the hearing is to take testimony from anyone in attendance regarding the twenty twenty-five tax levy. Before we solicit and open the hearing, Nicole, if you wouldn't mind just sharing a little bit about the levy, just a brief overview.
Sure, so the first thing that we're required to disclose during the levy hearing is this Public Act one oh two oh eight nine five. So this requires us to disclose at a public meeting. The information that's on here is our cash and investment balance in each of our operating funds and then our past expenditures for the last three years. So again, we just have to share this per school code. If anyone has any questions on it, be happy to answer.
For the record, I do have some questions, but I'm gonna ask you them later when we're voting on it.
Okay, so then I'm just gonna give a very brief overview of the levy presentation that I did to the Business Service Committee meeting on October fourteenth. So just kind of keep it high level for everyone here and hit the high points. So what is our tax levy? That is the amount of dollars that the school district gets every year in order to pay the bills for the following fiscal year. Sycamore, Sycamore's revenues are comprised of about seventy-five percent in tax levy dollars, so most of our money comes from local sources. So once we pass this levy tonight, then we will start working on the budget for fiscal year twenty-seven in January. So that's kind of the process of how the two work together. So again, we kind of work through how much money are we gonna ask for? How much money can we ask for? Do we operate under a tax cap and what that looks like? I'll talk about that in a little bit. Then asking the board to adopt that levy, and then we're required to file those levies with the county clerks in both the Calhoun and Kane counties, since we are in both of those counties. The big thing that we talk about with the tax levy is equalized assessed valuation or EAV. That's the total property valuation for all property within the school district boundaries, so residential, industrial, commercial, and then we have some railroad money that we get too as well. Why is EAV important? This plays into the calculation on how we get the final extension, meaning how much money do we actually get for the tax levy each year? So again, I touched on, these are the different types that we get. Most of ours is residential here in Sycamore, and we do get a small portion of commercial and industrial, and then farm as well. How does EAV work with the Consumer Price Index and the tax rate? So most recently, the EAV has been going up, and when that happens, your tax rate actually goes down for that specific taxing body. So your home values are going up, but the tax rate actually for Sycamore school districts, when you look on your tax bill, the tax rate is actually going down. History of CPI and EAV, and then the total extension there, you can see over the last ten years what that looks like. CPI has kind of been all over the place. It plummeted back in twenty twenty-one, then came up to five percent for twenty-two and twenty-three. That's the first time I've seen five percent in my sixteen-year tenure here, and then you can see the extension has gone up as well. Truth and taxation, school districts are required to hold a truth and taxation hearing, which is what Michael's gonna open up here in just a little bit, if what you're requesting is more than five percent greater to what the prior year's extension is. We are not asking for more than five percent, but we've always been very transparent and just sharing that information and still holding the hearing even though we're not required to. So we know for next tax year, the CPI is going to be two point nine percent, and then we've worked with the different counties on what the estimated EAV percent change is. It's looking to be around six percent. And then also part of that calculation is the estimated new construction, and that's looking to be a little over ten million dollars. This is what our estimated levy by fund looks like, so we are able to levy in each different fund for the expenses that pertain to each of those. So our educational fund is our largest, that's where a majority of our staff are paid out of, and most of our expenses come out of there for our students. So for the twenty twenty-five levy, we are looking to extend a little over forty-six million dollars. And again, this just shows from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five levy, we're asking for a four point eight percent increase in our aggregate extended levy, so those are all the funds minus the debt service fund, which is actually having a decrease. So overall, the increase we're asking for is three point eight eight percent. And then the bottom line, this is the impact on the tax rate, this is what I spoke about earlier. Even though your home value is going up, the actual tax rate itself is going down. So depending on if your actual home percentage goes up, some people will see a decrease in their tax bill. Again, it's just all dependent on what your actual home value is doing. So again, we like to put this up here, this is looking at if your home value stayed the same from last year, what your approximate tax bill for just the school district portion would be last year, and then this year, you would see a decrease. And then here's our levy calendar. Tonight, I'll ask the board to approve the final levy, and then we're required to file those with the county clerks by the last Tuesday in December, and then the levy extensions come out in end of March, beginning of April from each county, and then, as everyone knows, homeowners receive their tax bills in May, and so then we start seeing payments come into the school district. Our big payment comes in in June, and then September is our second large payment. And that's all I have for that portion for tonight.
And again, we'll have some question opportunity when we actually take a motion on this, but at this time, I'd like to, at seven sixteen PM, open the public hearing to speak to the tax levy. If anyone from the audience would like to address the board regarding the tax levy or submit any written materials, now would be the time. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, at this time, it does not appear that anyone would like to address the board regarding the tax levy, so I will be closing the public hearing at seven seventeen PM, and we'll continue moving on to the audience to visitors section. At this point in time, would anyone from the audience like to address the board regarding any matter for that matter? Okay, seeing no one in the audience, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. We've got superintendent reports, building and departmental updates. Any comments regarding item eight point oh one? All right, there's some pending policy change related to this, and Lauren has been instrumental in helping the board, especially with its board goals regarding communications, Lauren's communications director, so I asked if she could give us another update this month, just given how much she's been involved in a lot of what we've been doing, so that information is particularly relevant to policy eight point one zero, as well as to some of our goal pieces, which you'll see forthcoming.
I guess just a couple of quick comments. I like seeing the, excuse me, Spartan TV students involved in some of the things, I think that's really great, looking forward to that. And then I saw a question related to, or a comment related to updating the website from an accessibility standpoint. I don't know if that's gonna be real intensive or if it's just a minor update, or how intrusive it'll be for the district as a whole, but I thought it was a great report. Thanks for providing it.
Lauren's giving me some homework too, so. Yeah, I got a newsletter I'm gonna have to work on here, get to work on, excited, content, I don't know, not, so to the members of the audience and the people at home, we'll see what that looks like, so. But hopefully, we can connect with the community better, you know, share a little more in a different way other than just minutes, so. The after, the briefing, board briefing, I think has been really nice. I know, got some confidence on that too, so that is wonderful. And then there was talk of school board one-on-one videos, which is probably good timing, because we're gonna be finding a new school board member, so, you know, wanna be able to engage the community, show them, hey, this is a, you know, this is what that is, and this is why you should care, and, you know, so it'll be interesting. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the annual report for enrollment projections, so this is incepted out of our new policy five point two zero four for enrollment projection. Lot of information here, this is a great memo, thank you very much, Nick, for preparing this, really appreciate it. It didn't seem like there were any recommendations that we needed to take action on or as a future agenda item out of this, from what I saw, at least, it looked like we can remain steadfast, at least with what we'd anticipated, that's my takeaway, but I know that there's also some interest in us having conversations about this that are forthcoming in February and in a more advanced timetable, so we're sure to be able to give our admin leadership team ample time for recruitment, right, so. And hopefully, we make that a little easier for you guys.
Yeah, it'd be great. I do think, like, just regarding this, because it's a new memo that was added into that policy, if you guys have feedback on, if there's something that needs to look different next time, just give me that feedback, and I'd be happy to next year, otherwise, I'd probably use the same format, different numbers.
I mean, it might be not worth your time creating, I'm just curious, how long do you think it would take to do the actual versus anticipated ratios, student-to-teacher ratios? I guess by building or by class? Is that data we have easy, you could just, you know, export something and?
Yes, it depends on what year, what years you want to compare.
Just this, like, we thought the ratio would have been at the beginning of the year, let's say it's fifteen students per one teacher in the first grade class at North Grove, it comes out to seventeen students per one teacher. Like, would that, is that data we already track, or would that be requesting you to track something new and, like, if that's, pardon some to produce, I wouldn't say, I'd suggest we add that, but if it's not, I think it would be insightful.
Yeah, I mean, elementary's a little trickier, because we're tracking all summer, but I could, I could look at numbers maybe from the spring when we were making our initial staffing proposals and then look at current, outside of maybe a couple sections, I don't know that there's gonna be significant changes.
Oh, so it's not something, there's a lot of fluctuation in what we estimate versus?
Not really, I mean, some, some sections at some buildings, but I would say overall, there wouldn't be significant changes. But a couple, certainly there were gains at some sections, but.
If you don't think it's material, it probably wouldn't be worth the effort, I was just more curious.
Yeah.
Like, if you thought that would be something to even look at.
Can you populate that with AI? I went to this session at the conference, it was amazing. This guy, in fact, I have the handout with his information, and he said if anyone ever had any questions to contact him, I think he was from Naperville, but he literally put together a PowerPoint in real time on the Rough and Lucenary War, you know, and he said, yeah, you do have to go edit it and make sure to, that everything's correct, but it was amazing how this thing just pulled together the pictures, I think he was using ChatGPT.
Lots of opportunities. Yeah. No, and I, I mean, yeah, definitely. No, I had no issues with the format.
I recorded, and I recorded this to let you guys know if you want that information, and I photographed a lot of the PowerPoints.
Yeah, if you would share that, that would be great.
I will.
Anything else on eight point oh two?
No, I love the projections, thanks, looks like we're pretty good at guessing. Projections are very, very close, so.
Yeah, there was a lot of growth at the middle school. It wasn't anticipated, that was the big outlier, I thought, but you're able to accommodate.
Yeah, even so, thirty out of eight hundred is still perfect, yeah.
So the next item on the agenda is item eight point oh three, board goals update. Really detailed, this is great, good to see, and I know we're right about that mid-year point, so, and I know, you know, lots of, we've got an appetite for ambition here in this district, so that's not to say that this is limited by that, so I guess any comments on the board goals update?
The only thing I would add that I, if I can comment, is that I didn't include in this, because it's a recent development, is we've had a lot of discussion just around the dashboards, both academic success and the financial, and trying to narrow down exactly what we're looking at and what it should look like, and we've talked to or met with some third parties to see what their tools looked like, and that meeting kind of led to us, Mr. Rice, trying to build something out internally to see if it could be dynamic in what we're looking for, and I think he's made a lot of progress, so nothing to show you yet, but I think we're headed down a good direction, and then, yeah, can plug in some of those data points we want to highlight.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So hopefully soon, I can show that to you guys.
Yeah, I'm look, I think, looking for the item on here, but there's one about the five, item three here, about the five essentials survey, or, and I know we talked about switching, we're keeping it the same this year, which makes sense to me, or is that something that you think maybe we should just keep the same going forward, or are we still, do we still have the appetite to make it a different survey next year? I was just curious what you want.
So I think that could be discussion in the, in the spring for sure, when we, when we sit down for board goals. We've had some internal discussions about five essentials and maybe looking at some things we could do differently to try and get more participation, which I think is kind of why there was an appetite to move away. That was a part of all those discussions, but that's the way I understand it. So I think maybe let's see where, kind of what data we get back, but I still think it'd be worth looking at alternatives if we don't get what we want, you know?
Yeah, my only comment related to the five essentials was, can we help do something to drive involvement, so hopefully we can unlock the data for all the schools?
Sure.
So that we can really get a good view, and I think it's traditionally been the community that where we've lacked, if I remember, so if we can drive, hopefully, parents and community members to really fill that out, it'd be really helpful, I think, for the, for the district and community as a whole. So if that's a communications item or what we do, but how do we drive that and facilitate that?
Yeah.
When does that solicitation go out, do you know?
It's late winter, early spring, January, yeah.
Okay, so we, we've got a full window of opportunity, that's great, okay. From the student safety piece, or at least ensuring all students feel physically and emotionally safe at school, I'm just looking, a lot of that is pending, like, data we're hoping to receive to be able to get a better approximation of what that looks like. Is that, am I understanding that right, like, Fastbridge is gonna, it's gonna be a data source, and then we'll be able to see where, where there's opportunities and where there's successes, is that?
Yeah, and I'll defer to any of the principals, assistant principals, but the way I understand it so far is we haven't had a ton of opt-outs, so I think we should have some pretty good data, a lot of students participating, so I think that's good.
We did a trial with three rooms, we say, since we're learning that product, and having, and then we'll go from there.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Any other comments on the board goals update?
Just that the career pathway endorsement, I was glad to see that that's moving forward, and it might be something that we might want to touch upon, Nick, maybe at the LTC meeting, just a quick update, doesn't have to be overly thorough, but just kind of where that stands, but really glad to see that's moving forward.
Yeah, and I, I don't know that I necessarily put in this update, but it's one thing we've talked about, is this kind of growing into a grow-your-own pathway, which is why we chose this one first, that Oscar feeds into, you know, it's all kind of intertwined with some of our different programming, that our Oscar staff become our pair, become our students taking these classes, become our teachers, you know, so ultimate goal, yeah.
It's a nice vision.
Yeah.
I had an opportunity to sit in a board goal setting related workshop, and one of the things I thought that was really interesting was this concept of, like, sort of the process at large, and they mapped it out as sort of cyclical, and I know we spent a lot of time this last April, we had three meetings, three regular board meetings, or three special board meetings that were open to the public, where we went through the goal-setting process, actively attempting to solicit input for goals, sort of, I'd say, reaching to try and get our arms around what good goals could look like, what was, like, what were ten of data points. It was, it was very difficult, I know a lot of hard work went into it. I'm hopeful that, and I want to start looking at what April's goal-setting process will look like, and hopefully having it see improvements to some of, like, where our pain points were. One of the notable pieces was this idea of district goals not blurring with superintendent goals, so in concept, the way it was laid out was the board, in collaboration with key stakeholders, would develop district goals for a year or multiple years, and then those district goals would be the catalyst for a strategic plan that would be created by the superintendent that outlines how those district goals will be implemented over that period of time. That outlines how those district goals will be implemented over that period of time. That strategic plan is the basis for what would be superintendent goals. That are adopted into the appendix of a superintendent's contract. Um, and this is really relevant as we talk about, uh, hiring a superintendent, uh, for the upcoming year, and then. Amending that propen- uh, potential contract to include in the appendix. Not district goals, but superintendent-specific goals, so what will be really important and what you guys should really start thinking about, and the community at large needs to start thinking about. Is how, again, we intend to, in an open session, host district goal-setting. That district goal-setting and the outcome of those goals, what those goals are. Will, will be inclusive and hopefully will not take three meetings, maybe it can take one, and maybe we'll have better attendance. And that is, that burden falls on the board to, again, propagate. We will then need to though, have collaboration with this new superintendent to what that strategic plan slash. Superintendent-specific goals will be, to see the support to the district goals. I know we have had a strategic plan in the past, and my impression of the strategic plan in the past was that it operated as this overarching. Plan that had domains, and then we had district goals that we maybe made at some points, but. You, they fit in to the district, to the strategic plan, one, it was kind of cart before the horse. And it, I'm sure it worked in its own right, um, but at least from what I understand, many districts do. Uh, is this approach where we come up with district goals, these are the things, like what we've set, but maybe they're more specific. Even than what we have, a strategic plan is made by the superintendent in collaboration with their leadership team. They work on superintendent-specific goals that we agree to mutually, uh, amend into their contract, evaluate them on, and the year goes on. So that is the process that I intend to help us propagate in April. So, and I'm hopeful that we can, with the same goal-setting team that we had, you know, kind of have that dialogue and do that in public, so. All right, any other comments on board goals? Uh, item nine point oh one is the FOIA report, there were FOIAs, any comments on the FOIAs? Okay, item nine point oh two, the superintendent search process update, um, so I'm proud to, uh, report that we have had. Uh, more applicants, as I understand it, than most area districts have had in this process, so it's an overwhelming amount of applicants. They have narrowed those applicants down into a set of categories, a tier one and a tier two. We will be reviewing those candidates and their personal resumes and information with the advice of, uh. HY, the consulting firm we engaged this evening, they have personally vetted them, background checked them thoroughly. Uh, made sure that their, um, credentials and alignments, uh, would be suitable for the roles. And then, once we have, hopefully tonight, chosen of that reduced slate, we'll conduct interviews on December fifth. December fifth's interview process will span, well, depending on the number of people we interview, they're fifty-minute interviews. If you have six people and you have gaps, and you have an hour-long workshop before, and you have deliberation after. And we start at one o'clock on a Friday. We're talking about a long, long meeting. Beyond that, there is then gonna be due diligence, narrowing, again, the deliberation that happens. Then po- potentially a second round of interviews. Fewer candidates, more deliberation, then negotiation. Then s- then offer, uh, then signing, then onboarding. So a lot of time, lot of effort, and we are a board of six, we're also onboarding, uh, new, um, so we're gonna need to conduct. Interviews for that, so lots of, lots of balls in the air, but we're gonna get it done, so, I'm just not gonna work the month of December, I figure it'll just be easier that way. No, I'm kidding, but, uh, any questions on the update?
So with regard to the meeting on the fifth, if everyone has their calendars, I could do earlier than one o'clock.
That would be awesome.
I could do is, I'm just gonna take the whole day.
Yeah, is that, okay, so we can do earlier than one, because if we can do earlier than one, that would, that would be slick.
Um, sorry, which was this, the, the first meeting or the second meeting, which was the date? December fifth?
And we're looking at potentially then a second meeting, December seventeenth, eighteenth-ish, for second round.
I think eighteen I leave.
So just note.
So it would have to be, I'd have to do the seventeenth.
We had agreed it, we had agreed at one PM on December.
Yes, and I'm saying I could do earlier if there's an appetite from the board, because it's gonna be such a long meeting.
Can anyone not do earlier than one?
I might not be, well, at this, yeah, at this point, I'm, I may have had a morning appointment, yeah.
Talked, I mean, yeah.
Do this, send me an email if you can't do earlier than one PM. And then if there's no emails, we'll act on it.
Yeah, I'll have to check mine.
Second thing then too, just again, tentatively.
How early are you talking?
I mean, it's a fu- it's a fi- finite amount of time, right, so we're gonna, it's gonna take what it's gonna take, but if we started earlier, we can get done earlier, so I'm thinking. Nine hours, so if we start at one, we'll be done at ten o'clock at night, so.
Yeah, I'll email you.
Not for me, anyway.
The second meeting, again, if we do a second interview, what that looks like, attendance, just mentally start thinking about what your availability is, and if you could send me. Dates that don't work for you in December, that would be really helpful, so we can save some time.
The seventeenth, do you know off the top of your head?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday?
So.
That's gonna be rough.
And that's gonna be a night?
That would be evening, probably fewer potentially interviews, we don't have to all interview, but if we do wanna do, if we end up choosing to do a second interview. Logistically, that will be a challenge, so we'll have to make that decision.
Okay, so that's kind of up in the air until December fifth.
We couldn't wait to do it till after Christmas and just push back a little.
I mean, there's lots of options, there's lots of things to do, but again, that. Yeah, we'll discuss it, I think, after December fifth, maybe, there may be a really strong, compelling point to act even sooner than that, so. Because they have to also work around candidate availability, so. Okay, uh, anything else for the superintendent search process update? Thank you. Great, glad to hear that we're an attractive district, so thank you guys. All right, um. Teaching and learning updates, so we've got some other board reports here, um, LTC.
Alan, what you got?
Well, um, you may have seen the memo that was drafted, kind of as an overview of the meeting, as well as. The recommended actions that the committee, um, is suggesting for the board to, uh, accept. And, uh, vote on in section eleven, uh, the main topics that were covered, ELA program, we went through what's going on. Um, K through twelve, I don't know if you want me to go through the whole aspect of this, but basically, uh, K through eight looked really great, some concerns related to high school. Follow-up meeting in January to learn a little bit more, um, and then kind of what we wanted to look for, uh, from. The administration, the team administering the pilot, for a potential recommendation, um, at the February meeting. Uh, the board meeting coming from the LTC in January. Student performance, we went through the Illinois, um, report card for Sycamore. We decided a few things, one of the things that we're asking action on are just basically, um, approval from the board as a whole. Is that we're moving forward, um, with the aspirational goal of, uh, having all schools meet an exa- exemplary. Um, target, um, in the future, and then also using the Illinois State Report Card data. Academic data as a basis to start the dashboard, we can add Sycamore specific, um, data points that we want to include. But that would be a starting point, we also talked about, uh, school improvement plans, specifically Southeast Elementary, that was a targeted school in twenty twenty-three. Their, uh, school, school, uh, improvement plan needs to be approved each year, that is a recommended action, that we take that action and approve it. Um, we went through the FTE report that the administration provided, um, it was a good report, good starting basis, it's very similar to what we looked at today as far as. Um, enrollment, but, but from an FTE standpoint, and then there was some discussion related to, uh, staffing at the high school level. That can, that'll continue to go, uh, from a discussion standpoint, graduation requirements was discussed. Uh, lots of interest and discussion there with the potential of increasing those requirements, we're going to have a follow-up. Discussion at our March meeting, um, between now and then, the administration and the teams are gonna have some. Recommendations that they're gonna come forth with at the March meeting for us to review, and potentially a recommendation in time to the board as a whole. There were four new, uh, high school courses that were proposed, uh, the LTC committee is suggesting that the board recommend all. Uh, sorry, approve all four of those, uh, to potentially be run next year, pending enough student, uh, participation and interest. And then really, there was a lot of discussion related to the goal-setting meeting, uh, coming in the April timeframe that you talked a little bit about, Michael, as well as. Overall, the budget meeting, that's a joint meeting in February for the LTC and the, um, BSC. So you can see it, the, there are some, uh, committee recommended actions at the bottom, I kind of just walked through all those, and we'll get to those in section, I think it's eleven point oh three. Any questions on that?
Just a comment about the new courses, those sound amazing.
Yeah, if you go to the minutes for the meeting itself, there's a long write-up of.
Oh, okay.
Which of those courses is, uh, expected to do, and how it might work, and in which departments they fall, lots of really exciting stuff.
I was curious about the job program.
It's kind of an extension of, uh, the, the, a current work-study program, but I think it's a beefed-up version of that.
It's something that existed in the past, but, um, it's been quite, I don't know if you remember Greg, but it's been quite some time, it was there when Greg and I first came to the district. But it's been quite some times, it's been there, a lot of it has to do with just, uh, the ability of a teacher to have community partnerships. And, um, depending on staffing sometimes, it's not as strong as others, but there's a proposal to kind of beef it up from what it was in the past, so.
Again, to be in the jobs program, yeah, worked alongside Ray Borgland, Ryan Piclotti. Pete teacher in training. All of the middle school upstairs locker rooms organized. I didn't get paid, so.
Yeah, I did have a question for Alan, um, on the exemplary status. A problem that used to exist with shooting for exemplary status, I'm asking for clarification, is that it used to be only the top ten percent of districts. Got it, right, and it was, you were boxed out of getting it if you weren't there, but they're cha- am I correct that they're changing it?
There's potential for it to change, I don't think it's been approved yet for change, and then depending on how that changes, we may have to.
Right.
Evaluate how we.
Yeah, it's, okay, so I thought, I guess I thought maybe it had been changed, but it seems like they're weighing, changing it to a, just a rubric. And then it doesn't have to be the top ten percent of schools, but if your school just meets the metrics in category A through.
Right.
You know, E, then you get that designation, so you're not boxed out by, by, you know, ten percent of other districts or something.
That's right, yeah, but that it hasn't been approved yet, so if and when that becomes into effect, then we'll, we may want to decide how we go about doing so.
So they did a, um, uh, ISB did a, like, a series of, how do you guys feel about this, and they hosted them in early November. And I had an opportunity to get, uh, information about the quality of that, and, um, talked with, uh, some folks over at ISB about the general sentiment. Um, and it sounds like it, they, they made it sound as if it is inevitable, while tentative, it sounds like, to your point, it is absolutely tentative. It seems like this is, this new, um, system is, uh, this new framework is going to exist. And they're gonna have two baskets of indicators, they're gonna have a core performance and elevating performance, and to your point, the moving target. That existed before is now going to be a fixed target. I looked and just tried to map where our existing schools would fall under this new model. And found some really interesting opportunities for us, and I think that, um, it is absolute. And I'm excited at the idea of the tenability under this new report card model of exemplary, and I think that, uh. The longstanding sentiment of a moving target being a discouraging one is now gonna be ameliorated by this new model, so it's exciting.
Yeah, I think one of the nice things about it is that, eh, if we were to move forward with that, a lot of the board goals that we'll probably develop. Or have already developed, kind of feed into this already, so it's kind of a continuation of that, but just. That nice, strong aspirational goal, that we can kind of put, we can hang our hat on and say, hey, look. All the schools, this school, we've met these criteria and we're moving forward, um, it's just, just one additional nice, nice, uh, metric to have.
Anything else on LTC?
Okay, so we are gonna vote on those recommendations, so if you have any questions, otherwise, we can.
Thank you very much.
Great work, Alan.
It was, it was like thirty-minute meeting, right, you guys have done in and out?
Yeah, yeah, no, it was quite lengthy, but it was good.
There's a lot of good stuff.
A great audience, uh, it was great, it was all around, really nice.
Good presentations to this, um, our business services committee is already.
Are we voting on those later, I'm sorry, gotcha. Got it.
Uh, anything for business services?
We have not met since you got the last update, there's no update.
Good stuff, uh, all right, policy committee?
In the interest of time, um, there's a memo outlined, I'd encourage you to read it on future topics, we'll be taking action. Um, in December, potentially, on some policy changes, and we'll be first reading tonight those changes, and I'll walk through them when we get to that agenda item.
Slick, uh, nine point oh six, parent-teacher advisory update.
Meeting of the night, and, uh, we are waiting on some reports, I believe we'll get close around December third. Uh, there's still some work that's going into that meeting, so hopefully we'll have an update up.
Great, good stuff.
Will we be, uh, primary, primarily overlooking handbook, is that what we're gonna be primarily doing in the meeting?
So that, and that agenda should be released now to all of, to everyone, um, so you guys can all see it, ten- the tentative agenda, to see the structure. It's the same agenda in a lot of ways as what we had had from the framework from the previous meeting, so it's just an extension of that.
Okay.
To Christian's point, admin are working around the clock to get those reports in, we're, we're, we're working, uh. We're running it a hundred percent, so I appreciate you guys.
Yes, thank you, thanks, uh.
Anything, uh, so Spartan Senate update, they, uh, gave us a nice, uh, video update, uh, which was, I thought was great, really, uh. Love that, so, that's really neat, any comments, questions?
It's a nice video.
Yeah, it was, very nice video.
All right.
Very professional.
Yes, yeah, they've, they've got, they've got a really good team behind them, so. Uh, IASB conference update, uh, there is, uh, you guys saw, um, some reports, Alex, you put together a memo, which is.
Yeah, I would suggest we just potentially table this if anyone else has, and then just a timer for when it be done by eight, we're at seven forty-seven now.
Yep.
It's an oppressing matter, I mean, there's, there's, there's information, I would encourage you all to read it, but I'm not gonna go through it now, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's great, thanks, yeah, this is really detailed, nice, so. All right, uh, old business, we have here, adoption of the twenty twenty-five tax levy resolution. The recommended action, a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five tax levy resolution as presented, be soliciting this motion. So, is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five tax levy resolution as presented?
So moved. Second, is it?
Seconded, so at this time, is there any discussion, questions or comments?
Yes, I do have some questions, um, and mostly this is for the people watching at home, I'm sure there's lots of people, and I just wanted to make sure we're as clear as possible. And so Nicole, I've got some questions for you, and I think everyone will benefit, um, from talking some stuff through, so I appreciate your patience. Um, so, and these are for you, Nicole, could you briefly explain how PTEL limits the dollars we can collect from existing property?
Yep, so, uh, what is PTEL, I'll just give you the acronym for that, uh, property tax extension limitation law. So that actually limits the lesser of five percent, or the increase in the National Consumer Price Index. Which you saw earlier in my presentation was two point nine percent, so it's two point nine percent. We've, I've only seen five percent for two years in the last sixteen years that I've been doing this job, so typically it's CPI, so. We're limited to that amount.
Gotcha, and if we levy less than the full PTEL amount this year, can we ever get that capacity back later?
No.
So, just to clarify then, so under PTEL, the cap on what we can collect from existing properties tied to inflation. And if we don't levy up to that cap, the lower amount becomes our base, and that gap compounds year after year.
Gotcha.
It's my understanding, okay.
And then, related to the budget, is it fair to say that a large portion of the budget is effectively mandated by the state or by laws? I'm thinking special education, transportation, staffing mandates?
Um, yes, special education definitely has a lot of mandates, there, um. I think, have you ever given that number this past weekend, on how many mandates we actually have, but yes, um. Yes, there are a lot of mandates that the district has, um, and we know that seventy-five percent of our budget is collected. From the tax levy, so, um, that's really the only place that we can increase our revenues.
And is the cost of those services, in your opinion, I mean, just historically, are those growing faster than PTEL, uh, that are cap?
Yes.
Okay. And then do.
Insurance has been going down, right?
Yes, it's actually, it's actually negative.
Does the state, when they require? Does the state, when they require us to do those things, do they send them, like, do they fully fund those mandates for us if we have to do the things they say?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
So just, and I wanna chime in on this, cause this is a pain point for me. The state mandates that we run a school a certain way. And then does not tie, in a lot of cases, funding to it, like the resolution we just recently approved, that, uh, to lobby against, thank you to Heather. Uh, and then we are expected, under our county's cap on taxing, to levy a limited amount to meet the demands of the states. You get these two conflicting interests, your county saying, you won't tax beyond this amount, and the state going, you will run a school in this accordance with these obligations that cost money. But people don't work for free, so that, it might, I'm, I'm not missing something.
Yep, they're called unfunded mandates.
Unfunded mandates.
There are hundreds of those.
And if we don't meet the state guidelines in general, is that expose the district to financial risk or liability?
Yeah, especially from like a special education perspective, yeah, for sure.
But the state has an evidence-based funding model, and of course, they've identified and funded Sycamore. One hundred percent of the evidence-based funding, right? No, wrong, isn't it like seventy-five percent, something to that effect?
Um, so they, they do fully fund evidence-based funding, but again, we only receive like fifteen percent of funding from the state, so.
Cause they tier it, right, based on your need and so.
Yeah, so.
Our, it's, uh, the, our ratio is what, we're seventy-five percent funded or seventy-seven percent funded to the EBF model?
Or tier, yeah, or adequacy target.
Adequacy target, is that, okay.
Yeah, we're between, yeah, seventy-eight, eighty percent, yeah.
And like, I think DeKalb was at eighty-eight percent, something like that?
Yes.
So they're.
They get a lot more state money than we do.
But at the same mandates that we do to, okay.
Oh, I think that, that tier though, that, that, that's our tax base, so all of the property valued in Sycamore for twenty-seven. The state estimates that we could cover seventy-eight percent of the expenses required. And then EBF is supposed to make up the gap, but the issue is EBF isn't fully funded to make up the full gap.
And it doesn't.
It, uh, correct, for some districts, it just depends on the district, like, our peers to the east, it does. Us, a tier one school, it does not fully, because the rate of increase to EBF is about three hundred and fifty million bucks a year is typically what. The, um, state legislature allocates to it, which sounds like a lot of money, but when you consider.
Eight hundred and thirty something.
It does not even keep up with inflation. So the state reimbursements are not keeping up with inflation, which is, which is a quandary for, for boards like us that are tier one. So do you think there's a realistic way to maintain current services, meet state mandates, and generally do everything we need to do if we didn't levy at the max under PTEL?
No.
And even levying at the max, we still are likely gonna fall short. It's great, it's good, good system. But we've got a debt extension that was set based on what, our nineteen ninety-eight levy of whatever debt we had extended for at that time? So if in nineteen ninety-eight, a school district extended for no debt, they have, what, no available debt extension without referendum? But because Sycamore had extended for debt in nineteen ninety-eight, we operate under whatever it was extended for in ninety-eight, now.
They do get a CPI cost each year.
The law in oh nine, right?
But, yes, that didn't help them out if they didn't have anything to begin with, but.
But for us, it was just like darts at a dartboard, it just coincidentally, we happened to be levying X amount of debt in ninety-eight, and that is now our ceiling. For the amount of debt that we can issue without referendum, and that now supplements our ability to offer services and continually is being drawn on to maintain our facilities and buildings. To try to keep up with these unfunded mandates, is that?
Yes.
Okay, the sky is falling, the, the ceiling may fall on us, the roof got ripped off, I don't know, I'm just. Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, to put it like in layman's terms, I guess, we're only receiving two point nine percent new dollars in revenue. I can guarantee you our expenditures are a lot more than two point nine percent each year, so as far as an increase.
Our fund balance has been increasing consistently, right?
A little bit, yeah, just a little bit.
I mean, so it seems to me like the levy vote is basically about doing what we have to do, given the mandates and the realistic fiscal costs, our responsibility to the taxpayer, and more importantly, our responsibility to the students. And our opportunity for action and help, letting the community help us set priorities is the budgetary process. Which hopefully we get lots of feedback and interest on, and we're having a, um, business services committee meeting in February, and you're gonna start in January. And that's when we can show people, all right, you know, here's, there's sort of a fixed pot of money. And what we're gonna spend it on is how we can, you know, prioritize for the community.
So folks, what can you do at home? This is my understanding, cause I'm thinking, like, I look at this and I go, my gosh, woe is me, the sky is falling, we have this, this issue where if at some point, EAV, if the home, if your home's value doesn't go up. And let's just say in one year, your home's value goes down, that would be a devastating impact to our district. And something that we can control as a community is new growth. The community needs, because new growth in the year adds to the tax rules, as I understand it, is not capped. We get one year where we can have an uncapped amount to levy against new growth. And so like, in cities where they have five hundred million dollar data centers going in, it's just an insane amount of opportunity that comes in. In Sycamore, we had ten million of new growth last year. And so what does Sycamore have? It doesn't have a five hundred million dollar data center, it has a tiny little fragment of industrial and manufacturing growth. Um, we have nice parks, we have good schools, we have great schools, I would say, we should, and I hope we can have exemplary schools. And with that, hopefully, we can grow residentially more new growth and fill in some of these empty neighborhoods. Um, but even then, that's kind of a falling sword, because when you add new residential growth, you add pupils. So what we really need is new commercial, industrial, manufacturing growth to help subsidize the amount of taxes that we as residential. Uh, homeowners pay. And that is, uh, as I understand it, would help, that or the state needs to pony up and either, A, fund the schools to be in alignment with the mandates they have. Or B, eliminate the mandates, many of them, and say, we're not going to compel you to do this thing that you don't have money to do. But something's gotta give, but they solved it in nineteen ninety-three, didn't they? And we're seeing that, you're seeing that at home on your tax bill, the solution to that. Uh, so as I stand here or sit here, uh, lamenting about the woe, uh, woe is me, the state of, uh, our schools being funded by tax dollars. Handcuffed by PTEL and limited by mandates, um, I just wanna rant, so I feel better now, though. Thanks.
Missed anything? Anyone else have anything else they wanna?
Well, at a more positive note, I'm happy that many people will be seeing a decrease this year, so that I can vote yes, cause otherwise I would vote no.
I'll tell you the new growth.
That's it, that's all I got to say.
That's just for the school district portion too, just wanna make sure that's, you know, that you have other places that you pay taxes.
Right, right, right.
Just for the school district portion, the tax rate is going down.
And that's good, that's a positive, it's a good one. When it comes to taxes, down is always better than up, but yes, um, some of the mandates, if you look into them, are ridiculous and. We should do more lobbying to get them taken away, some of them that.
The only ones, so we're lobbying, so.
When, when does it, I, I, I understand Christian probably knows this, when can you, can you only do it on certain years, the lobbying against?
Well, lobbying, it's a, it's an ongoing process, but it's whenever they're in session.
I'd move to call the question.
Move to call the question, host a vote.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Cole moved to call the question, Christian seconded it. Uh, the motion is to, uh, end debate and, uh, take a vote on the levy. Uh, is there a, uh, host a vote, all in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Host? All right, we will call the question. The, let's see, let me pull it up. You're done listening to me rant, okay.
Kelly, could you restate the motion regarding?
I'm getting it, I'm, yeah, I got it.
I'm happy to talk with you later.
Motion to approve the twenty twenty-five tax levy resolution as presented.
All right, there was a motion, there was a second, we had discussion, we had a called question, we had a motion on that and a second, and it was approved. At this time, uh, Kelly, would you call the roll?
Aye.
Evans?
Yes.
Greidos?
Yes.
Regnery?
Aye.
Zantu?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, new business, board policy revisions for first reading, not approving these right now, just acknowledging they exist and considering their future. Uh, review at a later point. Any comments on eleven point oh one? Seeing none, we will move on to eleven point oh two. More policy changes in alignment with press updates. There are memos there in great detail for anyone interested, any comments on press one twenty? Seeing none?
Is there an interest to bring him back as presented? I would just be curious to know if the, any changes need to be made?
I was okay with him, I know we had a long policy committee meeting.
Having sat in that committee, I, I have no problems with it. Open to feedback.
What I saw looked good, what I ran over. Or maybe just a little bit more on the, the policy change. Cause one, or was it a new policy?
Which one?
Um, let me see, I'll have to find it now.
Made an eighteen-page memo going over the changes.
Yeah, there was one, it was intus- introducing a new policy.
This, this, uh, you're on the, yeah, there's a, there's a better memo.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're on the short one.
Okay. Yes.
Oh, no, that, oh, are you, was she looking at the future, like, future agenda report on what we'll be talking about in February?
I'm not sure, it wasn't the, it wasn't the eighteen-page memo.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I, yeah, so what was, what was in my report earlier is just what we're gonna be talking about in February and bringing back. We're not taking action on that now.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah, I'd like, I think for four eighties changes, I think we should, um, uh, collect some more information on feasibility of implementations. That way we make sure that we're cognizant of all the, um, pieces and, and moving puzzles. So I'm hopeful that we can learn more about, like, what implementing that policy would look like. And maybe where there are, um, like, what is the existing infrastructure? Alternative opportunities with the end being what we hope to intend on it. So is it possible, do you think, to produce, to maybe put together just a, a brief recommendation on, on that, something like that, just a memo, short, just a little one?
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I would suggest that we meet with admin first.
Sure, yeah.
Before we get that, if, if you wanna discuss changing this?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just looking to, uh, and this is maybe just something for me, but I'd like to understand. I wanna make sure that we don't, um, miss anything on four eighty particularly related to control requirements, so that way we know exactly what's being done. What we're talking about doing, and if it is going to create a lot of, um, burden relative to advantage.
Yeah, I guess, I just think to clarify, we could meet with them, give them more information, cause I don't think that's enough.
I'm trying to learn more, I like.
No, that's what I'm, I, I, I would just suggest that we meet with Nick and Nicole, as the policy committee chair and board president. To go over this before we direct them to make a memo, just so that they're clear on what the memo would entail. Does that, does that work?
We can, sure, sure.
It's a feasibility question, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, do you guys need a lot of direction?
I think we have clear direction and can put something together, and if you need more, I think.
Maybe that's, maybe that's what it looks like, is if we get, you work something up, and then you're like, oh my gosh, we, we need way more feedback on this than we could meet.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, put something in, and that, probably before it goes to the board, we just see if that's what we're been looking for?
That works, okay, great. All right, anything else, one twenty? Okeydoke, item eleven point oh three, eleven point oh three, approval of Southeast Elementary School School Improvement Plan. The recommended action, a motion to approve the Southeast Elementary School School Improvement Plan as presented, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Quick comment, learning and teaching reviewed this plan, and, uh, there was information in their recommendation about it. Anything else?
And who drafted the plan?
The school administrators.
Okay, great, yeah.
There's a committee that drafts it together.
Any other questions? It carries with it the endorsement of the learning and teaching committee? Yes, we reviewed it along with the others, uh, all the other schools as well. Great. All right. Kelly, would you call the roll?
Evans?
Yes.
Greidos?
Yes.
Regnery?
Yes.
Zantu?
Yes.
Hopple?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, item eleven point oh four, approval of the LTC, um, recommended actions is laid out in agenda item nine point oh three. Actions related to ELA pilot, student achievement, academic goals, school improvement plans, FTE planning, new course additions. Recommended action is to approve the recommendations of the ELA, or of the LTC committee as proposed.
Just approve in their report?
It's at the bottom of the report, um, in nine point oh.
That, that report, cause there's no attachment to eleven oh four, so it's just the same from.
That's why the motion refers to the nine point oh three, yep. So moved. Motion, second?
Second.
Christian, Christian will take it.
And discussion.
I just wanna say thank you, I know a lot of work goes into these, and you guys have done an incredible job with them, and I, I'm excited to see what, what happens with them, it's gonna be great.
Thank you, yeah, committee's getting, getting things in place.
Yeah, the meeting was one, run extremely well, you did an excellent job from the audience, I enjoyed it, so. All three hours, I was on the edge of my seat the whole time.
It's the least we could do.
Wasn't long, four hours, three.
Yeah, it was counted, yeah.
Any other comments? Seeing none?
Great work, Alan, that's it.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next item on the agenda is a one-time valued service bonus. Some working context to this, uh, this, uh, bonus, MOUs are, uh, included, the board, uh, has access to them and will be released for public consumption. Is there a motion to approve the valued service bonus?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes. Um, so to clarify, this, uh, bonus relates to the healthcare savings that the district experienced. When the employees on the low deductible plan migrated to the HSA plan, is that correct?
So we haven't experienced the, the savings yet, but yes, those are the expected savings.
Gotcha, and what are the savings, what year are the savings budgeted for? Or I mean, what year do we anticipate, like, what budget year do we anticipate realizing the savings?
So it will be the second half of fiscal year twenty-six and the first half of fiscal year twenty-seven, because that runs calendar year.
Gotcha, and then what are the projected savings to the district roughly?
I believe it was one point three million dollars.
One point three million?
And that's just for the years that we offer health insurance, right?
Say that again?
Is that just for the, like, so I assume, and this is the part that I think is nuanced, we're gonna save one point three million dollars every year we continue to offer health insurance, right? Is that?
I mean.
Well, I mean, health insurance costs will go up year after year, so.
Compared to what they would have been had we have not made a plan design change.
Correct.
Gotcha, so each year, one point three million, and then let's say the next year, health insurance costs go up. And what they would have gone up had we have not made a plan design change, let's say it's twenty percent like it was this year, one point three million becomes one point six million. So over a four-year period, that number is five million dollars saved off of an expense that we would have imminently had. Is that, am I missing something?
And the, the thing that, I, it's tough to get my head around on this and, like, talking about it. The plan, the coverage itself is very minimal change, is that correct? Was there a change essentially?
Coverage has not changed.
Coverage did not change.
It's still a PPO plan.
Still a Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO, okay. So it just seems like, have, realizing the savings without, without the coverage changing is almost too good to be true.
Could be.
But like, I'm not, am I missing something?
The deductible change, yes.
But the, but the actual, the deductible changes, but the actual, out of the maximum out of pocket for the HSA plan is, is better, right? Than the, if you include the cost of the premiums, if you include the cost of everything. The HSA plan is less expensive to the end user than the other plan, is that correct, or no?
I don't think that's correct.
What's the, what's the?
Like if you hit the max out of pocket?
Yeah.
I don't know off the top of my head, but yeah, I mean.
So, oh, yeah.
There, there is an increase to the end consumer, if they hit that max out of pocket, correct?
The best case scenario I have for a family who's on the HSA plan is saving six thousand four hundred. is saving six thousand four hundred forty-eight dollars. The worst case.
You're talking about, like, including premium costs?
Yes, including premium costs.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I'm talking total cost.
I thought you were just talking deductible.
No, right, I understand the deductible is higher, but the price of the plan itself is actually, is, you're paying less in premium, right?
Correct, yeah.
So if you wanna figure out how much like an insurance plan costs, you, the end user, you would take all your premium payments, multiply that by twenty-four. And then, yeah, so if you total, I'm talking out the door, everything, out the door, everything, the HSA plan is less expensive to the end user.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Many of our staff were already on this. This isn't brand new for all the staff. Many have already been on.
Yeah, many were already.
Under the five hundred, it's like roughly a hundred people are migrating, hundred and eleven people, hundred and thirty people, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Somewhere around.
Yeah, and those people who are migrating, as I understand it, if they were a family, best case scenario, not counting our savings, they are going to save six thousand four hundred forty-eight dollars.
Family coverage is gonna see the biggest.
They're gonna see, so like literally, on top of this potential bonus here, you now as a family, if you, in a best case scenario, are gonna have six thousand four hundred forty-eight more dollars at the end of your year than you would have on the low deductible plan. Worst case, if everything terrible happens to you, because of our HSA contributions and your new lower premiums, you're gonna save four thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars. So people who are switching, a hundred and twenty people are switching, are not only gonna get presumably this bonus, but also a forty-three hundred dollar like added benefit raise to their total compensation by not having an expense. Is that, am I?
If they have family coverage, yes.
Single coverage is, I add the numbers at twenty-five oh seven best case, eighteen oh seven worst case. So, just huge numbers and every year.
And then, and so then what we're looking at here is a one-time, we're calling it a one-time valued service bonus. This is a portion of the sa, a portion of the savings over time. I mean, it's because of, we anticipate saving napkin math, four or five million over five years, this one-time service bonus would be about twenty-ish percent of that. And that's what we're talking, and that was already essentially budgeted for benefits. And what the proposition is, is to keep that with the staff who it was already budgeted for and return some of the savings to them.
It sounds like a win-win across the board, right? By consolidating the um plans to singular, save the district and thus the employees' money. AC savings in their pocket, the employees do in their pocket because of the plan change as a total cost to them. And then this is a fun way for us all to celebrate that su, that success in this one time over the course of years, um, a bonus plan.
And the way the MOUs read, the bonuses are twenty-five hundred dollars per person. Regardless of if they, like, so if you migrated, as I understand it, you got, and again, your best case family, you got sixty-four forty-eight coming to you next year, plus this bonus in, based on the way that MOUs are laid out, twenty-five hundred bucks. So, and then again, your single, best case, you got twenty-five hundred bucks coming from this plan enhancement, plus twenty-five hundred bucks coming from this valued service bonus. If you were already on the HSA plan, you're not gonna see anything from having made the migration, except now you will. Because we're gonna give you some of the district savings, cause the numbers I was throwing out earlier, Nicole, right, none of those counted our savings as a district. This was just their premium savings, their out-of-pocket expense.
Well, you've thrown around both ways.
Yeah, the one point three would be both, yeah.
So this bonus will be attributed to them over the course of the next four years?
That's the, yeah, it's right, so.
And as we talked about unfunded mandates and the challenges of meeting those, this is a nice way that everyone wins in that sense and we're able to help over time, hopefully, support some of those unfunded mandates or just the district as a whole.
He's like.
We need to lobby some more.
What's that?
We need to lobby some more.
Yes, I agree. That's what I was trying to bring up before.
Any other questions on this? I think.
But maybe that could be a future agenda item because I don't think any, everyone knows exactly about lobbying or the opportunity to lobby. And if more people in the community got involved in it, they could help bring our ta, their taxes down too. Or have more with their pain going to the things that are important, because some of the mandates, if you read them, you, you know, really look into them, are really unnecessary and redundant as well.
Jeff Keiger knows all about it.
Any other discussion on this valued service bonus? Anything else?
I like the idea.
Kelly, would you call the roll?
Regnery?
Hi.
Santu?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
All right, I prepared some words and a chance that it did pass. So tonight, the board would like to share an update regarding our goal to attract and retain top staff. We know that dedicated individuals in this room and across the district are what makes Sycamore Four Two Seven School District exceptional. I'm pleased to announce that this board here has voted to approve a valued service bonus of twenty-five hundred dollars for all insurance-eligible staff. As we transition to a single HSA eligible plan in January twenty twenty-six, we've identified significant cost savings. This existing HSA plan already includes sizable HSA contributions and lower premiums for staff, making the transition alone an improvement to the district's overall benefit offerings. As for the millions of dollars in additional savings that now stay in your community as opposed to leaving to an insurance company, investment of a portion of those savings into the people who serve our students every day allows us to remain steadfast in our efforts to make our schools better. Our staff's working conditions are our children's learning conditions. Supporting our staff supports our students. Eligible staff members will receive the bonus and distributions over four years of continued employment. As I've said before, as a volunteer elected representative of the community, we will support you, we have your back. We are listening and we are taking action. Thank you for what you all do. Lead with care. We stand with you.
All set.
And with that, we've reached the end of our regular agenda. Is there any motion regarding executive session?
I move to adjourn to executive session for the consideration of matters related to five ILCS one twenty, C twenty-one, one and two for the following purposes. The employment, appointment, compensation, discipline, performance with specific employees of the pub, public body, discussion of meeting minutes lawfully closed under the act, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classifications of employees.
Second? Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just wanna note that we've added an additional exemption, exemption two regarding negotiating with collective bargaining agreements.
And salary schedules.
And salary schedules. Is there any other discussion? Seeing no discussion, Kelly, would you call the roll?
Santu?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Regnery?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We're live. Hey, you're done.
I'm good.
We good?
All right, it's uh... It's ten thirty-four, we're now in open session. Item thirteen point oh one. Sorry, it's not turning. There we go. Having reviewed previous closed session minutes, the Board of Education finds that the need for confidentiality still exists as to all prior closed session minutes and that these minutes shall remain confidential. Is there a motion to the effect of having reviewed previous closed session minutes, finding the need for confidentiality still exists and that these minutes for all prior closed session minutes remain confidential?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Kelly, would you call the roll?
Evans?
Yes.
Kratos?
Yes.
Argonry?
Yes.
Santu?
Yes.
Kappel?
Yes.
De Vito?
Yes.
All right, we've reached the end of our agenda, this meeting stands adjourned.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
Thanks.
Sure.